Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Thursday, September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five regular board meeting. Mr. Hetzel, can you please call a roll?
Here.
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 Mr. Manley.
Here.
Mrs. Maureen.
Here.
Well, everyone, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there a motion to approve the following minutes? The August seventh, two thousand and twenty-five workshop meeting, the August seventh special meeting, the August nineteenth Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, the August nineteenth special meeting, and the August twenty-first regular meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Horn and Mr. Manley, a second. Um, any discussion on those minutes? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Hetzel, can you please call the roll?
Yes.
Denverly?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
Mrs. Maureen?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Um, are there any recommended changes to tonight's agenda?
Not this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Deagle. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Moved. Thank you, Mrs. Denverly. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Horn. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Hetzel, please call the roll. Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Mrs. Maureen?
Yes.
Mrs. Coates?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, that brings us to our favorite part of the agenda, which is recognitions. And last night, all of us on the board, Dr. Deagle, Cliff, and Kevin, attended the Ohio School Board Association Central Region Fall Conference. Uh, we would like to recognize for our GJPS community two people who were honored last night and received two important awards. We would like to uh recognize each person individually, and once I say your name, I will read your nomination and then invite you up to the podium to say a few words if you'd like, followed by a picture. This first award is for the Ohio School Board Association Exemplary School Employee Award. This is an award given to staff deemed critical to the success of our district. Teachers are excluded as their recognition is through the Teacher of the Year Award. But I am so happy that Krista Parkey, our Transportation Coordinator, received this award. And I will read her nomination. Krista exemplifies everything this honor represents. Dedicated service, exceptional leadership, and a deep commitment to the well-being of students, staff, and the broader school community. Krista leads a team of bus drivers, mechanics, and administrative staff in one of the most fast-paced, high-pressure departments in our district. We affectionately refer to transportation as the GJPSER, and Krista leads it with unmatched composure, skill, and heart. Her leadership was especially evident during a district-wide initiative to delay the high school start time, aligning with research on teen mental and physical health. This was a massive logistical challenge. Krista and her team successfully rerouted our entire transportation system, impacting every building and every student schedule in the district. She approached this high-stakes project with strategic planning, clear communication, and full collaboration, ultimately making it a success for students, staff, and families alike. Under Krista's leadership, our Transportation Department has remained fully staffed, a rare and impressive accomplishment in today's labor market. While many districts have had to cancel routes or delay services due to shortages, Krista has created a culture where employees feel valued, supported, and proud of their work. Her ability to retain staff is a testament to her leadership and the respect she commands. Krista is an outstanding communicator, capable of navigating difficult conversations, sharing critical information under pressure, and building strong, lasting relationships. She is beloved by her team and respected by operations peers, building principals, and union leadership alike. She leads with fairness, empathy, and a sense of purpose that brings people together even in the most stressful circumstances. Operationally, Krista is a model of excellence. She upholds and improves processes, ensures clarity and consistency, and continuously seeks ways to make systems more effective. She emphasizes safety as a core value, ensuring not only the physical safety of students on the road, but also our culture of safety and support among staff. Her nuanced thinking and sound judgment have helped steer our department through countless challenges with calm professionalism. Perhaps more, most importantly, Krista models exemplary behavior in every situation. Whether solving a crisis, supporting a team member, or collaborating with other departments, she consistently demonstrates integrity, compassion, and excellence. She leads by example, and by doing so, inspires those around her to rise to her standard. Krista Parkey is more than a transportation coordinator. She is the heart and pride of a team that ensures hundreds of students arrive safely at school each day and a leader whose impact is felt across our entire district. We are proud to nominate her for the OSBA, and she's the proud recipient of the OSBA Exemplary School Employee Award.
So, good evening. Thank you very much, and I wanted to first and foremost thank the board uh for this wonderful nomination along with Tracy Deagle, the Superintendent, Cliff Hetzel, and Tre- and uh Kevin Klangler, our COO. This is truly a team effort, um and it is a little bit of an ER department sometimes. But uh I'm proud to do it, and I'm privileged, and I'm very honored to receive this. But I I will receive this in honor of my team. So, thank you very much.
Krista, we would like to get a picture with you.
More things.
Last night wasn't enough.
First. Everybody ready? One, two, three. One, two, three.
Perfect.
Well, the next award is the Ohio School Board Association Friend of Public Education Award. This award um cannot be given to staff. It is an award to honor those in our community who have demonstrated a record of supporting public education. And we are so happy that our President of Middle School South, PTO Sarah Narlock, has received this award, and I will read her nomination. Sarah is a dedicated community member and a passionate supporter of public education. She understands that parent engagement is essential to building a strong, inclusive school culture, and she leads by example, joyfully and selflessly donating her time and talents for the benefits of students, staff, and the entire Gehanna Jefferson community. Sarah is deeply involved in the PTO leadership, having served for six years at one of our elementary schools, including two years as president. During her tenure, she distinguished herself through clear, consistent communication, and outstanding fundraising. One notable achievement was leading the coordination of a large community bazaar featuring fifty local vendors. This event not only raised vital funds for our schools, but also celebrated and supported local businesses and artisans. As her children advanced to middle school, Sarah continued her service first as Vice President and currently as President at Middle School South. In addition to her school-based involvement, Sarah is an active volunteer for the Gehanna Jefferson Education Foundation and a committed supporter of its largest annual fundraiser, the Gehanna Gala. She began began as a building representative at Black Lake Elementary in two thousand and twenty-one, sharing key event communications with families and staff and coordinating meaningful auction item donations. As her children moved up, she continued this role at the middle school, and in the twen- and in two thousand and twenty-two, joined the gala planning committee as the corporate guest liaison. In this role, she manages communications with corporate and group table sponsors. She has also generously contributed her creativity by designing and building decor for the gala since two thousand and twenty-three. Sarah's impact doesn't stop there. She played a critical role on the district's levy committee, helping to successfully pass a bond and operating levy in two thousand and twenty to fund Phase Two of the district's master facilities plan. This achievement will benefit current and future students for years to come. Sarah embodies the spirit of community service, leadership, and advocacy that strengthens our schools. Her dedication makes a lasting difference, and we are grateful for her continued contributions.
Well, good evening, and thank you for this incredible recognition. I feel so lucky to be part of a community that values education and truly believes that every single student deserves the best. Over the past nine years, I've had the privilege of serving on PTO boards and also working alongside many dedicated parents, teachers, and community members who care deeply for our students. Uh, a highlight definitely for me was being able to serve on the Levy Committee, which passed the funding, as you said, for Phase Two. We have this amazing high school opening up in January, and I'm just so proud to have been a part of that. Um, it has really been inspiring to see what we can accomplish when a community comes together to support our schools. So this award really belongs to all the volunteers and the parents and the educators who make our schools such a special place, and I am grateful for the opportunity to support our students. I can't wait to see all the amazing things that I know that they will achieve. Thank you.
That brings us to our school community reports portion of the presentation. I do not see our student council president, so we will move to um Nicole Kelly from Middle School West, who will give a report on the Gehanna Jefferson Education Association. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. Um, GJA had no official updates, so I was instructed to give you some middle school updates. At all three buildings, all of our ELA teachers are up and running piloting new um potential ELA curriculum. They're working really hard to keep the rigor up while diving into new material um and curricular materials and testing them out with kids. So I've I've witnessed this firsthand, even as a math person, I've seen the work going into the ELA department, so that's very exciting. All three buildings have added a new what I need win period to provide an opportunity to fill instructional gaps and extend students on an individual basis. Um, and that's been a new thing that we've undertaken, and it's up and running and going well. At Middle School West, we have enrolled twenty-one new students since August fifteenth, eight of which are EL learners, bringing our EL numbers up to fifty-two. So we are loving all of the diversity they're bringing to the building. West is participating in the Team Tressel Fitness Challenge we just kicked off this week, sponsored by Lieutenant Governor Jim Tressel. Um, we're currently working on the bronze level, and we were adding, we all added six new healthy goals to achieve for ten days to achieve the bronze level. We are pleased to share that our eighth-grade students um on the science test recently um achieved remarkable success. This, they scored at seventy-three percent of the students proficient, which is higher than the state average of sixty-three percent. There's significant evidence that West exceeded the student growth expectations by a larger magnitude than typical. This is all attributed to our amazing science team. Beyond building strong science skills, these teachers focus on fostering critical thinking, problem-solving abilities, and helping students succeed beyond their classroom activities. These outcomes reflect not only West's dedication to doing what is best for students, but also the positive impact of ongoing, meaningful professional development within the Science Department and collaboration among the science teams across all three schools. With science in mind, I do want to extend an invitation to our Fourth Annual STEM Fest at Middle School West. It will be Thursday, October sixteenth, um starting at five-thirty, so you guys can all swing by for a little bit before your Thursday board meeting. Five-thirty to seven-thirty, we're partnering with the Columbus Zoo, The Works, Mark Berman, The Bug Man, and many more. If you know a community partner who would be willing to come and set up a hands-on STEM experience for students, this is open to the entire district and have them contact me. I'm happy to put the, put them up somewhere. Um, one of our intervention specialists, Christine Goddard, her husband came last year and taught us about the science of cotton candy and made cotton candy for the kids. So we'll take any STEM-related activity. I have one last special thank you to Sue, who agreed to uh donate the cookies. I'm uh, we have ST math at our school, and I have a monthly celebration calendar, and this month, as Gigi is baking up some smart cookies. So she agreed to bring the cookies to celebrate with the top three classes, so we thank you very much, and that's coming up soon. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, um I'd like to invite up a president of Local Two Forty-nine, Jerry Moore.
Good evening. Mao sends his regards. I actually saw Mao this afternoon out at the transportation compound. He said he was working. But it looked a whole lot more like recruiting to me, just saying. I told him I had my eyes on him, so. I'd like to thank Krista while she's here. First of all, congratulations. And second of all, thank you for the luncheon that was provided today. We had a luncheon at the compound for all the drivers that was provided by the office staff. And um so that was nice, and as we all came in, we are never, ever, as a group, in the same room at the same time. It's impossible to do. There, because of our schedules, but it was a uh food spread that was out there, and we could come and go as we pleased, and it was very nice and very much appreciated, so thank, thank you for that. I have two messages this evening. One of them, the first one, is the same message I have had for the whole four years that I've been coming to the board meetings and getting to speak, and that is that um we are so close, and I think Krista would agree with me, we are so close to being complete with our staffing, and we get to this wall, and we can't push through that wall. It is my goal, my goal before I retire, again, to come to one of these meetings and say, it was awesome this morning. All of our subs were sitting in the lounge drinking coffee and reading the paper because we didn't have anything for them to do. That's never gonna be the case. That's never been the case since I've been here, but that, that is my goal, is to have the drivers and have all the routes filled. And the subs are a luxury, and uh, but right now, um, I go back to my days when I first came in the door and I was uh applying to be a sub, and Jason Key was the Transportation Coordinator. And um I said, so a sub, you call me when you need me, and he goes, no, no, you just come in every day, cuz we, and I'm like, well, that's not a sub. And uh, and he goes, right, right, so. Um, but we get so close, we get um staffed, and we're not, we aren't, this year's gone re- really well, I think. We haven't had any trouble rolling the routes out, but we get two people in training, and then somebody tears a rotator cuff. Or we get somebody that um i- it's always two steps forward, one step back, and you just, you're always chasing that, and it's frustrating, but we are so close. So the second message I have, and that was um in my years as a firefighter, one of the questions that I always got was, what's a typical day like? And I would laugh and smile and say, doesn't exist. There is no such thing, and I'm coming to learn that driving a bus is the same thing. There is no typical day. Case in point, um, we spent uh last week rerouting ourselves because the roundabout at, the, the new roundabout, for some reason, needed repaved, and I'm still trying to figure that out. But um, so that roundabout at Reynoldsburg New Albany and Morse was closed all last week, and there was an impact out in the Black Lake corner of things that we had to reroute and get around that. And that impacted me, so that was frustrating, but next week, you've probably heard that the railroad crossing, we have one railroad crossing in the entire district, and they're gonna close it. And I'm like, well, what are the odds, right? But um, so that railroad crossing on Reynoldsburg New Al- Albany Road um down by East Point Lake Apartments is going to be closed all next week, and that has, we haven't actually even managed to work all the kinks in the routes for the beginning of the school year out yet. And so before we even get those worked out, we're rerouting. We literally had to um uh manually touch twenty to twenty-five routes and contact all those kids and families and basically make alternate plans for next week while that railroad crossing is closed, and a little grace next week would probably be appreciated because unfortunately, the fix for a lot of those routes next week involves Broad Street, and that's not a good thing at all, ever. So um, but the, the plans are in place, we're ready, and come Monday morning, we'll see what happens. That's really all I have for this month. I appreciate the opportunity, and have a good rest of your meeting, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you, Jerry. Moving into board reports, um we have uh Mr. Manley with a report from Eastland Fairfield Career and Technical Schools.
Okay, hello, everybody. We met last Wednesday on the tenth, and we were privileged to have Mr. McGregor, the pilot um instructor there with a student, Matt Klein. And so we learned a lot about that pilot team program that everyone talks about. And so it's eleventh and twelfth graders. They uh, the student talked about taking a lot of meteorology classes. And they also offer a drone license, which is up and coming, like a supplemental thing on top of a pilot's license. Uh, they have twelve simulators. The students can start in eleventh grade. Um, and then in twelfth grade, they had recently a visitor from Republic Airways, the aviation trainings. They had a wonderful time there. Um, they were appreciative that we increased their budget and got more toolboxes, so two students per toolbox. They're uh enjoying that, and it's quite a luxury to have every tool that you need when you need it. So the students get to drive the Cessna that's on campus, and they drive it around, and they joked about that it's really hard because they have to navigate around the trees, and uh they taxi around the campus buildings. And they say, one, that's the training, and so once they take the test, it's a piece of cake compared to driving around campus. Um, so dodging the trees is good training. Uh, no casualties so far. So the uh FAA private pilot, it's a written knowledge test, so they um could take it, and they have a high success rate, which is typical of Eastland Fairfield, and um they do a capstone project as well, so hugely popular and successful. It was wonderful hearing them talk about that. And then just want to mention that we're getting a lot of visitors from legislators, and Senator Houston was there um the week before. And then I was blessed to go to Washington, DC and met with Senator Houston's aide, extended invitation to our ribbon cutting. Also, um, since he was there, he talked about, uh, since the senator was there, he talked about hit one of his earmark projects, which is when families qualify for, when they're on SNAP or Medicaid, and they qualify uh for scholarships and resources that we offer in our programming. A lot of times, they get disqualified, so they don't apply and they don't follow through. And he said, you know, that he wants to fix that, so that's not the case, and you know, I thanked him for that and said, you know, that's been an issue for decades, and so that would be quite an accomplishment to uh, you know, make it more accessible to more families um and the growing needs. So I met with uh his aide, it was a lengthy and wonderful visit, and then also Congresswoman Beatty's uh Chief of Staff. So pretty incredible experience partnering and conveying our messages to them about priorities for education, funding, mental health, safety, et cetera. And so uh, he called that Friday and said, his aide called and said that the senator wanted to fly in and visit again, and so he was just there again last Friday. So um, good things are happening in our region, so thank you. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. Any questions for Mr. Manley? Next, we have um Mrs. Maureen with the Finance and Facilities Committee updating.
So we met on Tuesday, September sixteenth, and um had our um consistent Phase Two construction project update. Saw some amazing pictures of the third floor of the new high school. Uh, if you have the opportunity, you can access that uh report um and see those beautiful pictures. Happy to report that we're still at two-point-two percent in change orders, which is due to the tight management of our administrative team. And we appreciate you for that very much. We followed that with the monthly financial report, and I won't steal your thunder. But again, the, the attention that our administration gives to managing expenses and, and securing dollars is, is awesome. Um, then we've had a discussion of our five-year um forecast, the financial forecast. And I hope if you're interested in school district finance, that you uh watch that portion of the meeting. We did talk about many of the constraints that the state is putting upon us um and the loss of dollars from the state. So um, it's, it would be um a good learning opportunity for that as well. And while I have the, the attention, I think it was alluded to at our meeting Tuesday night, but the Ohio Education Policy Institute commissioned a study, and it's analysis of the residential property taxes in Ohio going back almost forty years. Like, how did we get where we are? And I think it's um really important to understand that the, the burden to residential taxpayers comes from a variety of, of issues, but the main one is the transition of, it was kind of an equal. Um, in nineteen seventy-five, Class One real estate and Class Two real estate were much more closely tied, right? And businesses also paid on And businesses also paid on uh their personal property inventory, equipment, assets. If you look at that in twenty twenty-three, residential taxpayers now pay sixty-seven point five percent compared to about twenty-one percent. For commercial for businesses. So because the legislature kept chipping away and taking off, reducing the TPP and. All of the other ways that businesses were taxed, the burden became a shift to the residential taxpayer. So it's a great report. It's it's eleven pages long. If anybody would like it, I think we all got a copy, but I would be happy to share it. With anyone if they just email me. I think it would shed a lot of light on how we got where we are today. So. That'll move in my financial report.
Thank you, Mrs. Maureen. Any questions, Mrs. Maureen? Um, next uh with an insurance committee update, Mrs. Warren.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, we had our first insurance committee update um meeting on Tuesday, September second. And really, the 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 purpose of that meeting was just to go over what our claim experience has been for the year and to talk about. Um, our renewal, because we're up for renewal for our insurance this year. Um, and open enrollment starts actually at the end or the middle part of October. So it was a preliminary meeting just to kind of go up. Um, go through and update everybody on kind of where we at are are currently in the proposal for the renewals. We had a lot of robust discussion about that. Um, and the team was going back to our insurance to talk through some other options. We have our follow-up meeting on Monday. Um, next week, um, and we'll be going through those proposals and have recommendations for. The board for the October meeting since open enrollment will be starting. Um. The the net net of it is a kind of across Central Ohio, insurance rates like everything else are going up substantially. So we're really looking hard at how we can mitigate that to the extent that we can in comparison. So more to come. On that, but it was a good initial update. Any questions?
You want to roll right into?
Sure. Okay, so the next part is uh the fun part on the update from Gehanna Jefferson Education Foundation. And we have some visitors tonight. That are going to talk about the Alumni Musical, which we have talked about in past board meetings and what a fantastic show. Um, we all got to witness um this summer. And I will turn it over to uh Mr. Mario Maciose and a team of a couple of uh. The other uh crew of uh production. So they're not going to perform tonight, but they're going to give us some some uh updates. Yes, exactly. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Warren, President Coats, Superintendent Deagle, members of the board and staff. Uh, my name is Mario Maciose and I've been asked by the directing team. By the production team, by the alumni participants, by the Gehanna community to give you a quick update on the activities from the July for uh Alumni Musical. First of all, we're here to say thank you. Uh, it could not have been completed. It could not have been produced without the support of the Gehanna Jefferson Public School System. So we're very, very pleased and we're very, very happy. We want to share with you what the, we think, long-term plans could be utilizing these types of opportunities. And more importantly, say thank you to some other folks as well while while we're here. When Cindy Maciose and Mr. Shellhammer first had that conversation two years ago about doing something to memorialize that auditorium space. Nobody knew that it was going to grow to what it actually grew to. It was amazing what came out of it, but it was all revolving really around one thing. Uh, Aristotle wrote that the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. Mrs. Maciose's classes took that motto and used it during her twenty-eight years here. And the intention was to be able to take and across a sixty-year span of alumni. Yes, we had sixty-year span of alumni participating in this event. From nineteen sixty-four to two thousand and four, have them all buy in to that motto, that the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. Two of the people that are here tonight were part of that alumni. We'd like them to say just a quick thing, if you would, uh regarding your experience.
Hello, um, I'm Andrea Shokeri Hayes, a two thousand and four graduate of Gehanna. Um, Gehanna is special for a lot of reasons, but particularly because of how they engage in the arts. I was so lucky to get to experience amazing teachers, amazing opportunities at Gehanna. And went on to make music my career as a professional opera singer. And I could not. Be more overjoyed or thankful for the experience that I had getting to come back to this stage. Um, where just so many happy memories were made. Um, what is, they say you can never go home again, but actually you can. Um, it was so special, like literally my, the last night of the show, my body was like shaking at curtain call because it's just. You're never going to get to have this experience again because it was just so many special people literally on the stage to celebrate Gehanna. And their experiences here with these amazing teachers in this wonderful place. And I'm just. So thankful for the opportunity and it continues to have ripples. Um, missed singing so much, joined the Gehanna Community Chorus. So. Getting to meet even more people and do more things in the community. So just thank you all so much for everything that you did to facilitate this. It really meant so much. So thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tim Matthews and I graduated in two thousand and sixteen. I am here because Maciose asked me to share my experience with you all. And of course, I had to say yes. When she calls, you say yes. I just wanted to say that this show brought such an immense amount of joy for me personally. I joined theater late in my time with Gehanna. I joined my senior year. So I only got the chance to do one musical and that was Shrek. So when Maciose said, hey, we're doing another musical just for alumni, I said, you're lying. She said, no, I'm not. I said, okay, where do I sign up? But I just wanted to say that being able to go into the school that I walked the halls for four years and have that chance to pay. An homage to the stage that I came to love during my last um year at Lincoln. It just meant more to me than. Any of you guys would ever know. So I thank you for that. And who knows, maybe we can do another one. Thanks.
Again, sixty-year span of alumni and everybody bought in. And if everybody had not bought in, we would have had the success that we had. So that was level one, the engagement of those alumni. Level two were the financials. Uh, at a very top-line level. Our net expenses were right on budget to what we projected based on an eighty-three percent occupancy or eighty-three percent sell rate along with our uh various other income. So we were on budget for twenty-five thousand seven hundred dollars. Our revenue, again, on budget based on those same metric projections at fifty-two thousand six hundred dollars. Which gives us the proud ability to tell you that our proceeds are roughly twenty-seven thousand dollars. We're very, very proud of that for what everybody was able to accomplish. So that was level two, making sure we met our expenses and met our goals. The third level was the disbursement of those goals. And how could we not only for an immediate use and a long-term use, be able to have those funds impact the Gehanna community? On Monday, Cindy and uh Mr. Schmidt uh attended the uh Foundation Board Meeting. And presented some consideration items for them to take a look at for approval. Not all of them have been approved yet. Some of them are still under consideration. The first one that was approved uh is going to be a five thousand dollar donation to GRIN. GRIN was a great partner with us. We truly appreciated their participation. In addition to that, the students and the community provided thirteen hundred and fifty pounds of food, three hundred and fifty bottles of water. And a two hundred dollar donation on top of that five thousand dollars. For consideration, two grants have been proposed, one being for the instrumental music and one being for the performing arts group. For the instructors to be able to manage along with the foundation. Those are still under consideration for a total of five thousand dollars. We then were looking for that long-term approach. How could we engage collectively past this particular event? And what a great way now to be able to participate with the Alumni Association. So when we took a look at what the base of a lot of the participants of the event were. Everybody credited their Alumni Association of Community Theater for getting them involved. There certainly is synergy and a a groundswell to do this again in the future. Uh, and include alumni, current students and friends of the high school. And most importantly, how do we increase the ability to engage the alumni as a whole and bring back giving to the schools and giving to the community? That said, the entire team proposed to the board for consideration, the establishment of a fifteen thousand dollar musical production fund. To be used as future seed money for productions of this nature. To not have to put the burden on the foundation to fund us, allow us to be able to fund ourselves. I couldn't put a dollar value on the first paragraph up there, the thank you to you guys, the thank you to the associate, to the administration. But the biggest thank you and shout out of all, and Mal's already been mentioned once tonight. There wasn't one thing we asked for. There wasn't one thing we requested. There wasn't one thing we needed help with that wasn't immediately turned around for us. To the point of him taking umbrellas in that Friday night rain and escorting people from the parking lot into the auditorium. He didn't have to do that, but he and his staff did. They were fantastic and we hope you know that we appreciate so much that they are as much. A builder of that financial base as anything. We couldn't put a dollar value on it, but thank you very much for all the money that was invested from the school system. We know there's a. An investment you all made for them to be able to do what they did and we thank you. We also were able to uh garner an extra four hundred and fourteen dollars from both Otterbine. And the contemporary and show tickets that we're going to give to the foundation and let them utilize those for the uh gala next year for auction items. And then the remaining two thousand dollars at the discretion of the foundation to consider however they would see fit. So that's the way we have basically put together the investment recommendations for about twenty-seven, nearly twenty-eight thousand dollars and we could not be happier. Uh, and again, uh, thank you for allowing us to do what these people were best able to do. Uh, trust us that we would be able to deliver on what we said we could accomplish. And most importantly, give us an opportunity in the future to take it to that next step with you as well. And any questions you could certainly address to Cindy, please. Any questions?
Well, no questions, but I just want to say I can't thank all of you enough. I mean, it brought me such joy to attend and, you know, I grew up um close to New York and my parents would take me to see Broadway shows and. I'm I'm not just saying this, like it rivals what I saw on Broadway. You guys are so talented and just it was amazing.
Even you, Tim.
Asta and crew as a whole. Any questions coming?
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing um the just what a great impact it was. It you're right, it it will go, the legacy has been started. At this point, so the expectation will be there for how we can continue that. Um, a couple of other things from the the foundation. Um, it was time for the mini grants to be reviewed. Um, so the the committee met recently and awarded the mini grants of up to five hundred dollars to sixty-seven different staff members. Um, and the funds will be distributed in the coming days uh to support the initiatives. Total distribution, including some private donations, is almost twenty-nine thousand dollars. So again, from the proceeds, from the gala, what we were able to help. Um, teachers within the district, which is wonderful. The Alumni Association that Mario referred to, um, after twelve months of careful planning. Um, the the new association has been established. Um, the bylaws have been um approved by the foundation. And the Alumni Association is being headed up by President Scott Schmidt. Um, yeah, imagine that, right? Uh huh. Um, so he's a, he's a glutton for punishment or something. I'm not sure, but we are very happy that that he's in place. The. Uh, we have fifteen board members and it ranges from the nineteen seventies to the twenty twenties. So a wide range of participation across the years. We have uh eight hundred and thirty-two alumni that have provided information and we're hoping for many more to go to the website. And provide their contact information. So um, this is a plea to for GLHS alumni to go to the website, click on district information. Click on alumni and at the bottom, click in the right upper right-hand corner that says, share your contacting information to stay connected. So automatically, people are going to get enrolled into the Alumni Association upon graduation, but current contact information, as we all know from our own kids. How frequently they move. And I do mean how frequently they move. And that will be the the challenge. Um, and then they're also doing a clash of the cap, the classes. The class with the highest percentage of alumni contact information will get five hundred dollars towards their class reunion. So. So it'll be kind of fun, you know, a little competition. Who doesn't like competition? So that was the update from the foundation.
Thank you, Mrs. Maureen. Any questions for Mrs. Maureen?
A couple of years ago, gosh, it's probably been ten. No, maybe not five. They did a directory of alumni. And they, it's it's a blue and white bound book. Do you remember that? Yeah, how does that, can they marry the two pieces of information together?
Considering I have not even heard of that, we will, we will point that out um to see. So maybe Jill, if you if you have it, we'll, we'll transfer that over. That's a great idea as well. So I think with everything that we have going on as a district with the new high school opening. It's a great opportunity to reach out to all the alumni. Now is the time to strike with the excitement that everybody's going to want to come back and see. You know, so trying to get that information out there in social media and stuff too, um, to get people excited about providing the the information and and being involved again. I think it'll be great.
Well, that takes us to public participation. I am not seeing any slips for public participation, so we will move on to administrative reports. Um, with our superintendent's report and Dr. Deagle.
Good evening. Thank you so much. Uh, this evening, I just have two very brief updates. One is, you know that our state report card data was released this week. And we are very pleased that we have held steady at four stars as we saw some drop around us. So we are particularly uh pleased with a four-star rating, particularly. Also during our new uh elementary curriculum adoption in language, arts and mathematics. I just want to remind you that Jill and Tia will be presenting all of this data to you. Um, as well as a little bit of a um brief reminder of how to read the report card at your workshop meeting in October. That's October ninth. So I appreciate Jill and Tia for doing that. One um area that we were anticipating a low rating on was that CCWMR rating, which is the College Career Workforce and Military Readiness. Um, and I want to just let you know that that rating is based on data from two years ago. So that is tricky. Um, data in that it it's reporting and many people think that was last year's graduating class and it was really two years ago, much like the graduation rating. Um, and you probably also remember that in my second year as your superintendent, we were working on our strategic plan. And we also were learning a lot more about this CCWMR rating. And we are so fortunate that both our community and our staff and the state. Um, both alluded to the importance of developing a strong workforce, whether someone is going into college right after. Um, I'm sorry, going into their career right after high school or after college. And you probably also remember, we really wanted to time this up in a thoughtful way when we would really start to dig into the CCWMR rating. Because it does take resources. Um, and this this state rating, uh, we didn't want to just. Utilize resources without really being purposeful in what our objective was and how we were going to go about achieving success with this rating for our students. Um, and I, it also should be noted that we knew the components, but we weren't exactly sure the the strength of each component in the rating. Until late last year. And we had already submitted the data two years uh that represented two years ago's work. So that was a little bit tricky as well. Um, it's not uncommon for that to happen with new requirements from the state. So regardless, um. We have studied the components of the CCWMR and our strategic plan, as you know, is in place now in its second year. We have strong alignment. And we're really getting um started on identifying the district structure for administrators to lead the work, coordinate the efforts. Systematized reporting is incredibly important in this area, collaborating with our businesses. Um, and connect the CCWMR rating to our courses so that we can determine measurable action steps. Um, we recently received approval from the Department of Education for our first ever pre-apprenticeship program. So that was a real celebration after four months of. Um, working on that and um have also engaged with the ESC of Central Ohio um for their no-cost service of auditing our pathways program. And as a reminder to you all, they're going to make recommendations of things we can do at a moderate cost, at a low cost and at no cost. So that we can deliberate and and decide on what we're going to do. So that we can deliberate and and decide on what we're going to do to move forward. You know, I do get asked, why are some districts ratings higher? Because if you're telling me this is new and we were being deliberate and purposeful and we're. Working on our plan, why are some districts rated higher than us in this area? And truly, it's because some districts started working on career and workforce readiness years prior before it became a rating. Um, with the state and so naturally they're going to have stronger ratings, but we're not worried about that and we have a very strong plan to move forward. I really encourage our community to go back and look at our workshop meetings from last year where you were receiving updates on this um, and tracking our progress. The last thing is I would just like to thank Eric and Cliff for attending the senior expo with me today at the sanctuary. We had. Three hours of wonderful conversations with our senior community. Uh, often we were asked, why are you here? We have no kids in school. Um, and you had a a great answer for that. Um, and and when we said to them, because we're one community and we want you to be proud of. Schools and we want to tell you what we're doing, um, we had really positive conversations and we appreciate the support, we um. Had some senior passes for sporting events, and so I do want to uh, remind our community that they can come to our central office to to receive their senior pass to attend our events for free. So it was, it was a great middle of the day for us.
Thank you for being there. Any questions for Dr. Deagle? Next, uh, Mr. Hetzel with a treasurer and CFO report.
Thank you, Mrs. Coats. Um, just to follow up on a a couple of the committee reports, in regard to the insurance committee. Um, Mrs. Horn is correct, we've been working diligently to um, get our renewal prepared for January one and that includes open enrollment. And negotiating the different benefits and we're very, very close, we'll have, we've built the agenda today, we'll have a meeting on Monday. With the recommendation to the board in October, so you'll see that one coming. Um, in regard to the finance and facility committee meeting, we did go over a draft of our five year forecast. And um, and then also presented on our monthly report, which is attached to tonight's agenda for your approval. Everything so far is running in line with what we had estimated within a half a percent. As far as our general fund operations and uh, and appropriations that we have tonight on the agenda. For your approval aligns with our forecast. And so we're, we're happy with the way that that's falling into place. We also have uh, tonight. Uh, a wonderful list of donations, again, it just, the community is so engaged with what we do and they give us so much. Uh, we just can't, can't be thankful enough for everything that everybody does and and a wonderful event that you had this summer as well. The friend family donating a really tremendous golf cart to Middle School East in honor of some children there. We had blood donations, um. Company donations to schools, we had nothing bunt cakes did a a day in our honor and twenty percent of their sales went to us. Um, and we said they could throw in a couple of bunt cakes as well, we don't have a problem with that. Dr. Hudda's office, I think historically has provided some resources to our clinics, which we're appreciative of. Chris Ferente uh, offering a significant donation for the Fill My Tummy Fund at High Point. And then Beck Summer and Sophie Richardson also providing donations in that area. And so again, we're very appreciative of that, we have a transfer noted on here, which is when we receive those Fill My Tummy Funds and we transfer them to the. Food service account and that's what that transfer is. That concludes my report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hetzel. Any questions? Well, that brings us to the financial business portion of our agenda. Is there a motion to approve H six, which um, contains items H one through H five?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Maureen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Horn. Any further discussion? Mr. Hetzel, please call the.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
Mrs. Maureen?
Yes.
Mrs. Coats?
Yes.
Mrs. Horn?
Yes.
Mrs. Dimmerling?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Um, next we have um, our assistant superintendent, Mrs. Elliott with her report.
Thank you, good evening. Um, just a couple, couple items tonight. Um, I wanted to start by talking about September being attendance awareness month. Um, Jennifer Korn um, has been working extremely hard to help us transition. To the new attendance laws, which include updates to um, how we record absences and how we support students that are at risk of being chronically absent. You may have seen that we are an official partner of Stay in the Game. Um, that is a a program that's been around for about seven years and it involves incredible partnerships with the Columbus Crew. Um, the Cleveland Browns Foundation, Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, Harvard's Proving Ground and Batel. Um, and they work to implement really encouraging programs that um, aim to improve student attendance. Um, and as you know, we um, celebrated this week with our Start Hello Week. Um, it was beefed up a little bit this year from last year. Thank you all for starting your days um, on Tuesday and Wednesday with our students. Yeah, it's so exciting, so upbeat. Um, everyone was so excited to see you, of course, and of course loved. The famous characters that we're able to visit, so we had Piggy and Elephant, Brutus Buckeye, um, the crew, Crew Cat. Um, so just a wonderful event, um, and lots of positive energy around making sure our kids are at school, because if they're not, then they can't learn with us. Um, I also wanted to just um, give you a heads up that we are diving into reviewing the program of studies, you know, we usually bring that to you. Um, in November, December, meetings have started to be. Taken a deep dive to audit the program of studies, um, and we're excited to be looking at ways to get more pre apprenticeships into the program of studies. Dr. Deagle mentioned the one we were approved for from the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. Um, regarding the technology program that we offered this summer and we'll have one to do during the school year. Next year, we're also hoping to bring on um, another education um, pathway pre apprenticeship. Program that's separate from our CTE teaching professions program. To expand our performance automotive um, pre apprenticeship offering, which we've had a couple students do in the past and then also. Looking to expand um, and offer a broadcasting one as well. Ideas are flowing, we're really looking for ways to be fed up, um, and you'll be hearing more about that in in the coming months. We have our second round of non addendum club and activity approvals on the agenda this evening. As a reminder, reminder, we approve those three times a year, so we'll have one more approval in January. Um, tonight's list brings us up to eighty five different clubs and activities total. Um, this month's including the ones that you approved last month. Um, and of course, some of those um, activities are offered at multiple sites, so it's, you know, it's really. A great opportunity, we as always were appreciative of our staff that go above and beyond and. And provide those opportunities for kids to engage in things that they're passionate about. Few things on the agenda tonight, um, a couple, some overnight trips, our girls' basketball program um, is going to be participating in the Queen City tip off and then. Before you um, are is the Washington DC trip for our three middle schools, we always love that. Um, also um, agreement for the orchestras trip to New York, so that's exciting. Um, and we are engaging again in another enrollment study, which is healthy for districts every two to three years to um, be watching the growth. Um, and developable land and and checking our enrollment um, and such, so. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Elliott. Questions?
Not a question, but just to comment, I just want to call out all the travel uh, preparation and organizing and collaborating that you do. And I can't tell you how many times I hear from people about their trips and parents, chaperones, et cetera. And the huge responsibility of taking all that on year after year, and it's so fun and exciting to hear. Life changing experiences that you provide, so thanks to you and your team, just really appreciate.
Yeah, thank you all for supporting us. Other questions?
I just wanted to add to that, I got an eighth grader going to the field trip, the DC, she's super excited about it, so thank you, but I'd also like to add to that, I know that we do a lot for kids who aren't able to go. That during those days that the other kids are back here, that we really are very purposeful about not just having a typical school day, but rather different experiences and places they get to go. So I think that's really important too. And then again, as you mentioned, all these clubs, but also all these teachers who um, support that, as I'm looking, I know that my. One of my kids said, hey, I'd like to have a debate club and her teacher said, okay, let's make it happen, so that's an after school thing, that's not paid and I really appreciate the extra time and. Effort that goes into that, so thank you.
I did just want, it is paid, just so you know.
I mean.
The time.
Extra time, yeah.
Sure that the hour or so after that they stick around and keep doing their thing, yeah, there's a little bit more in there, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Elliott. Well, that brings us to um, that are eye on the agenda, our assistant superintendent, is there a motion to approve I twelve, which are those items that Mrs. Elliott talked about, I two through I eleven?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. Is there a second? Second, thank you, Mrs. Dimmerling. Any final discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Hetzel, please call the roll.
Mrs. Maureen?
Yes.
Mrs. Coats?
Yes.
Mrs. Horn?
Yes.
Mrs. Dimmerling?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us to human resources and there are thirty one items for action under um, human resources. Is there a motion to approve J thirty one?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Horn. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Dimmerling. Any discussion?
I see Ron Dimmerling as a volunteer coach. Is that? Is that your, no?
Okay, so we we have debated this one and we're pretty sure that somewhere in the world, yes, like within uncles of uncle, yeah, because my. Yeah, because my, they're so huge, they they're just.
Big family.
Just like, yeah, yeah, it's somewhere in there too, yeah.
Any other?
Just.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say again, thank you to um, like when our teachers retire, thank you so much, we see Lisa Foster there. And just all this stuff here, I mean, this is, yes, you're correct, Mrs. Elliott, they are getting paid. But I do appreciate all the extra time and the extra hours because it is truly outside of that contract day and it is really the more that we can do. To provide, you know, the best experience that we can for the kids, so there, I mean, to your point about there being thirty one things on here, there are a lot of things. That are happening outside of that regular hours, which is just wonderful and needed, so thank you.
When I was going over the agenda, the substitutes and just want to send out my appreciation for the substitutes. I uh, worked as a sub and hello, uh, say hello morning, um, I was talking with a substitute and it just brought back like. The importance of that and to piggyback off Jerry, I subbed as a driver and as a teacher and um. You know, it it's critical, like the the backbone of, you know, offering relief and uh, support for our staff. And they're an important part of the team, so just want to give a shout out and appreciation to subs everywhere.
Other comments, questions? I'll just add to the thank yous to all the coaches that were in this section and also a big welcome to our new staff that are joining us. Mr. Hetzel, please call the roll. Yes.
Mrs. Coats?
Yes.
Mrs. Horn?
Yes.
Mrs. Dimmerling?
Yeah.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
Mrs. Maureen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now we'll move to our chief operating officer report with Mr. Klingler.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Education. I would again start by extending congratulations and endless thanks to uh, Krista Parkin, the entire transportation team. Um, it was an honor last night. And also like to thank you for recognizing Mal Miller at the high school. Um, he does an incredible job and and all the uh, folks in operations kind of work behind the scenes. So anytime one of them gets recognized, it means a lot, so thank you very much. Um, all the operational teams have been very busy, not only providing uh, support services to our students and staff, but also behind the scenes. Um, we're working through a lot of critical phases and projects, um, some of which are just in the inception of design, but others are nearing completion of construction, so. The entire team is hard at work right now. As we reported Tuesday night, the high school project continues to progress on schedule and you'll notice a few of the remaining owner furnished items on the agenda for your consideration this evening. I'd like to touch on a couple of those. Um, first you'll notice an amendment to our waste management services, which adds a compactor to support the new high school. I know that might not seem exciting, but again, for operations, folks, that's it improves our operations significantly and it's something that they're not used to having at the high school. And they are very excited about it, so it's, it's going to be uh, very useful, it'll it'll make for a much cleaner site and easier disposal of waste, so. You'll also notice um, Fab Lab, Digital Arts and Robotic Lab computers, as well as vape detectors for the new high school. Um, all thoroughly tested and competitively procured by our technology team who does a really good job at. At vetting the technology before purchasing it, oftentimes they bring in samples and test them themselves um, to see. To make sure that we get a high quality product and the best value as well, so big thanks to Matt Blackwell and the technology team for their work there. Um, the last item I'll I'll touch on is a resolution for the administration delivery and installation. Of the fifty to sixty semi truck loads of furniture we are going to receive, starting uh, the end of this month. So it's, that's a that's a project in itself, um, and a lot of coordination goes into that, we have a coordination meeting coming up with a lot of folks in that meeting. Because uh, the building administration needs to be uh, understand who's coming and going on their site, our transportation team needs to understand how it affects busing. Um, and our construction team has to understand as these are owner provided items. They need to understand what our vendor is going to be bringing on site as well. And so our doc will be ready for them to deliver these items. Um, and there are going to be some new dumpsters and stuff set up, but there's a lot of, a lot of exciting things happening on the high school site. Um, Aaron Winter, um, actually outside of his position here with the district. Uh, manages trucking and logistics, so he is going to be overseeing this portion. Uh, he's a perfect fit for this and he's really, really good at at coordinating these types of, these types of things, so. The only other thing I have this evening, the unicorn at Jefferson Elementary did not get a shout out, so I wanted to make sure the unicorn. At uh, say hello at Jefferson Elementary got a shout out. Are there any questions?
Were you the unicorn?
I was not.
I thought maybe that's why you were offended.
Yeah, that was it.
Thank you, Mr. Klingler. Any um, questions? Thank you very much. That takes us to K thirteen, under our chief operating officer, is there a motion to approve K thirteen?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Horn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Maureen. Um, any final discussion?
I think the one thing as we're out in the community a lot right now, um, the excitement of the new high school opening and seeing. You know, the number of trucks that are going to be coming in and just talking about that, so I think just reiterating the community open house. Is critical, I mean, I, that's what I've been sharing with uh, different community members and their shock that they're really going to get an invitation. And we're like, this is a celebration of our community and the support that we have for the community, from the community for this new high school, so. I think we just have to continue to hit that all the time. That it's going to be a big celebration um, of what everybody as a team has achieved with this, so it's exciting, thank you.
To build on that, um, they're really excited that they get to kind of say goodbye to the old high school and then go into the new, I've got a lot of feedback on that as well. Other final remarks or questions? Mr. Hetzel, please call the roll.
Mrs. Horn?
Yes.
Mrs. Dimmerling?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
Mrs. Maureen?
Yes.
Mrs. Coats?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, and then uh, in general business of the board, we have one item for action, is there a motion to approve the MOA with OPEC number two forty nine? Thank you, Mrs. Maureen. Is there a second? Second, thank you, Mrs. Dimmerling. Um, any discussion on that? Hearing none, Mr. Hetzel, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dimmerling?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
Mrs. Maureen?
Yes.
Mrs. Coats?
Yes.
Mrs. Horn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And is there a motion to adjourn the September eighteenth, twenty twenty five regular board meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Horn. Any final discussion for tonight? All right, um, if you're here for government relations, after the meeting, I will sign your um, your paper. Thank you for joining us tonight. Um, Mr. Hetzel, please call the roll.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
Mrs. Maureen? Mrs. Coats?
Yes.
Mrs. Horn?
Yes.
Mrs. Dimmerling? Mrs. Dimmerling? Motion passes.
It is 7:37 and we are adjourned.